Mark, what's up?
How are you?
Good.
Mark Ryder.
He is.
All right, it's six o'clock. We'll go ahead and call our town hall meeting to order. Tonight, we're here going to talk a little bit, start with about the special purpose local option sales tax that's coming up on the November 3 ballot. And then we're going to open it up to questions either about that or anything that anybody in the audience wants to talk about. This is a 1% tax, one penny tax. This is a continuation and not an additional tax, so we'll remain at 7% overall on the sales tax. We have some boards outside with the different categories that we're using. We'll talk about parks and rec kind of to start with. We have a general obligation bond for Oak County Veterans Park that will continue through this next SPOLOST. That's about five and a half million dollars. And then we have some additional upgrades to the parks and rec facilities, which is $3.3 million. During the last SPOLOST, we completed OVP multi-use fields, if you've been out there, roof replacements. We bought turf maintenance equipment and also did some upgrades at Bogart Sports Complex. And from the 2021 SPOLOST, we hope to add tennis court additions. This is a continuation and completion of the master plan for the tennis area. Also entrance improvements for Oak County Veterans Park, as well as some other infrastructure improvements. Water resources with the last SPOLOST, we completed replacement of Cause Creek with a was on a filtration system. We went back to a traditional treatment system. We have 1.5 billion gallons of capacity now, and that will be expanded to 3 million gallons a day. And that'd be part of Cause Creek will be some of the treatment and also some discharge over at our new site on the middle of County River. Roads, we continue paving roads with SPOLOST money. That's where the majority of it goes. We also are doing some different intersections improvements along as well. And also some sidewalks and trails will be possible with that money. Farming protection will continue. Fire rescue. During the last SPOLOST, we had a new fire station along with a new ladder truck, brought new fire engines. And we would like to continue that on with the 2021 SPOLOST. We have additional one additional engine, a couple of new tankers, an air and light truck, extrication tools. The scuba cylinders need to be replaced and also our CPR machines that we bought a couple over the last year. We have one here tonight if anybody wants to look at them and see how they operate. Historic scenic, we're asking for additional money there. It's 125,000. We still have some money left from 2009 and 2015 that we're in the process of getting spent at this time. And we had a complete engineering study done at all of our historic sites. And so our goal is to get those back into tip-top condition to last for the future generations. Library administrative building is another one. As you know, the library board has voted to go in with us at the building at the new site on 441 at old 441. So a new build will meet the current needs and also offer room for expansion in the future. And maximize our resources with the state and local. We'll get some money from the state for the library portion of the building. And then hopefully consolidating our operations will bring a lot of efficiency to building maintenance as well as just our employee interaction. And then general county facilities. And we had a complete reserve study done on all our buildings. And so we've looked at heating and air roofs, and we kind of got a schedule on when these things need to be replaced based on the life. And so we've got enough money programmed to replace those items as we go through. And then last night, the Board of Commissioners approved a contract for broadband initiative being brought into the county. And that contract is contingent upon this passing of the SPOLOST. So we'll have 4.5 million if when the SPOLOST passes to spend on increasing our internet capabilities in Oak County County. Cool. With that, we'll open up any questions anybody might have.
Could you tell us about the whole spring road closure, permanent, temporary? What kind of feedback are you getting from folks in the county?
It's most of it's been positive. A lot of the people with the younger kids that are driving are very happy. We've got some other, I mean, there's definitely some folks who would like to see it stay open. So we're hoping to get a good feel on how that impacts traffic, traffic flow, and also our accidents at that intersection. And then we'll be judging that over the next, you know, six or eight weeks. We also have a project we just awarded a contract last night for engineering at Snow's Mill and Rocky Branch for a roundabout. We provide we obtained right away and we also provide the engineering in the state will do all construction and utility relocation that's required there. So all those things together, we'll kind of make a judgment call at the end to see how it works. So before there's, when it comes time to abandon it, we will have public hearings and the big advertisements and that kind of thing before we just shut it down totally. So they'll be, hopefully after everybody see, everyone sees how it works for, you know, a good bit of time. We'll get good buy-in, but we'll see. If you're joining us personally, you do need to use the raised hand to ask a question or make a comment. On the sales tax numbers? Yes, so the state of Georgia did an audit for the three-year period. And the company they audited, it was determined that all the sales tax collected was coded in as a state. State sales tax and no local options or educational was distributed as it should have been. So to the credit to the governor and the Department of Revenue, when they found the error, they did go back and calculate it out and made a distribution to all the counties and cities that missed that money. So that was almost 500,000 in local option sales tax and almost 500,000 in special purpose. His school system also got a write-out 500,000 for their part of the educational local option sales tax. So that, that was a good shot in the arm for our budget. And so we feel pretty comfortable, we're going to hit our numbers for FY '21. Well, obviously, it's a very large corporation and as technologies change, a lot of times, you know, a lot of these companies are going to apps to make payments. And so sometimes the processing doesn't occur at the store and goes back to the headquarters. For whatever reason in the setup, it didn't get coded that it's collecting 7% for Oak County, but it just didn't break it down correctly. So that's the purpose of them doing audits anyway, is to catch something like that. There's nothing malicious about it. It was just an error made in whatever coding was done in their software. Yes. So we back in 2017 in January, we had a bunch of meetings with the commissioners and we sat down and came up with a list of goals or strategic plan, for lack of a better word. I was kind of going over it over the last couple of years, looking at how successful we've been at knocking those out. One of the things we talked about was electronic filing system where we were slowly getting rid of file cabinets and everything in our offices. And it's making our record search a lot more efficient. So that's almost fully implemented and completed. Broadband was another big one, and we got that, that was settled last night, getting that moving. Got a question? We'll go in. I'm not familiar with Starlink and I'm not sure, you know, we've been hearing even your cellular devices operate, they hit a cell tower and then they hit fiber to be transferred around. We have an immediate need in our county. It's been highlighted with COVID. And so we think now's the time to move on that. I don't know that you'll ever get away totally from wired or wireless internet locally. You know, maybe someday satellites will replace everything, but we don't know when that's going to occur. And we didn't feel like we could sit back and wait.
John, let me catch on that. Dr. Mayberry, we've got personal experience with some of the satellites in our family and currently they're not as reliable and it's plus about double to triple the cost of wired internet service, if you can get it. But, you know, the satellite, when it sends its signal down to earth and then back and that type thing, if you have a thunderstorm or anything in the area, then it impacts that unless you've got multiple satellites. And so the reliability just hasn't been there so far. And by far, all of the testing and the engineers and everybody is still saying that the wired service is the most reliable. And hence, that's why all of the cell towers have the wired fiber going to each one of those. So then we're trying to do the fiber backbone for the county, which can be used for cell phones, it could be used for broadband and everything else. Yeah, we appreciate your comments on that and your input. One of the things, we've been looking at this for over three years, well, about three years now. And so this isn't a new concept that we're looking at. So we invited everybody in the whole community statewide, even nationally, to come in and help us with this. We did RFQ, we did RFPs. And then, so we put that out there so that we could have multiple inputs into this from the professionals, not, you know, it's just like our county administrator and I were talking yesterday, he said, you know, I'm not a tech on this. And so that's why we went out and secured people that had the technical knowledge to be able to come back and give us guidance in this. And they gave us proposals and what they would do based on the current technology. And so I'm sure the technology you're talking about was part of it, but they still felt like this was the most reliable and safest for the taxpayers in the community. The other thing that is also a win for us is that in 20 years, the investment that we have will come back to us because we're going to be able to recoup that in, you know, we'll be able to take over the assets of the whole system. So that, all of it will be ours at that point. Yes, sir. There will be a fee associated with it. And some of those details still has to be worked out. But there will be a new company that's going to be the billing arm of this. And so all of those type details is still going to be worked out at the future. But yes, there will be a fee for it. So it'll be recovered at some point, but it's going to be a ways out.
So the group we're in with, they're in it for profit. So they're out to make money. And their investment will be significantly higher than what we're investing in it. So all the stuff you're talking about, I'm sure they looked at as far as how long these things are going to take to get their money back. Yes, that's our goal. So it's going to be a mixture between hardwired and there'll also be some over-air transmissions as well. Just when you get to the less dense areas, I mean, some houses are a mile off the road, so running cable to every single one of them is going to be problematic. So combination of the over-air and we're going to try to do it in phases so that it, we're hitting not only the north end, but the south end at the same time. But total buildout, I think, is two and a half years. So the goal is to get some type of service to every home in the county in two and a half years.
And I think, Dr. Mayberry, to your point, then, you know, as technology changes, this company is going to be flexible to be able to utilize that technology. And if the satellite is the most up-to-date technology, then this company is certainly going to utilize any of that. Because we're looking at doing the 5G and using existing structures. It could be that, you know, here in Oak County County High School, some of the, if we had like this building or whatever else could be utilized for broadcasting the 5G. If you move further down south area, you may have existing towers that could be utilized. There may be some mini towers that might be installed on the pole lines. Any other structures that might be around, you could utilize that as well. So it's going to be a combination of a lot of different things. It's not just one technology, you know, just not everything is going to be fiber, but we're trying to get the backbone of that.
Well, I'll just say that I think from, we've done everything we can to include the Board of Education. We put them on our IDA. We've had them involved in our Economic Development Task Force. Attend their meetings. I've made myself available to go speak. So is it perfect? No. Is it troubled? I would say yes at this point. I'm hopeful at some point we can kind of work through things and sit down. To me, until we have the five members of the Board of Education and the five members of the Board of Commissioners sit down, you know, in front of each other and have a conversation in front of the public, that's the ultimate cure to what's going on. So I don't see it as is a hot point for the election. I mean, there's been some questions about it in some of the forums and stuff, but overall, things are running very smooth in Oak County County. We've accomplished a lot of goals that we set. We're running efficiently. There's some areas we still like to see improvement. And if, come January, we'll sit down and come up with another list of goals to work on the next four years.
I'm going to make a comment too. You got three former Board of Education members up there. I was a chairman. And to be quite honest with you, to me, it's, I'll just say it started during the Dove Creek Elementary School. I can't tell you how big, I do know this, that we have been over we have, I don't want to spend the floor time, we have had two of it, one staff, high-ranking staff person, one school board member on our Industrial Development Authority. We have one of their school board members, one of their members is on the Economic Development Committee, Prestigious Committee. We sit on nothing. We just voted to give them $101,000 We just voted to give them $101,000 for expecting they were just handed in. And I will say this, back maybe in 2018, when the issue with Dove Creek, the failure by that side, that group to find the gas line. And we asked for some help because, you know, to be honest with you, I thought it was safety, not a roadkill. And if they were here, I would tell them to the state. We almost just run out of the Board of Education meeting. And then, I think it was about that same time, they had a strategic planning meeting, invited all kinds of people in the town. You know who they didn't invite? This man. Now, we control the water and sewer. Now, if you're talking about strategic planning, future locations for schools, they need public water and sewer, and you don't even invite the Commission Chair? And so, not to beat a dead horse, I don't know what else we can possibly do. I just don't know if somebody has a solution. But here's the other thing, we're not always going to agree with them. That ain't going to happen. It's not going to be 100%. And if we disagree, well, we don't like going there. Even with the issue, John comes to all of us and says, we're going to come in and take some money from the state. What do you think about, what's your opinion about helping OR and ACT, and then a chunk change going to the school system? And we all said, regardless of our issue with the board and student center, the right thing to do was to try to get the money towards the kids. We have never wavered in that. We spent $2.3 million at Dove Creek on the road. So I would just tell people, you know, look at what has happened, what we've tried, continue to try to do. But to get them to sit down in a public meeting, which group had failed, it hadn't been, this group, we meet the public once a quarter in a town hall meeting. How many town hall meetings does that body do? Zero. So you tell me, you answer, give me an answer. But I don't know. But I cared deeply about this school system because the eight years I was on, we had some tough times. But we had some good, strong people and we worked through it. And there were some issues with the county government at the time, but we got through that. So, but this one, I just don't know how far I can keep going, you know? I'll do the right thing for those kids, but I don't know what else to do. I really don't. So, yes. That's my thing too. Well, those were some tough days, because like I said, we had some good people. We had some good people. And they sat down with both across the way, and we worked out. And I would ask that government, look at what the facts are. And because, and here's the other thing, we do roads. We do roads. They don't. They don't want to work with us on what we think would be a good solution over on Malcolm Bridge. So we do roads. Let me tell you, why would they spend over $5,000, I think it was supposed to be $5,000 to hire an engineering firm to tell us what you've been telling us anyway? You know, that makes no sense to me. Spend tax dollars for that, they've been marking that message from the beginning. But why would you go spend tax dollars to go hire this guy? You got an answer? I'm all ears. All that's left.
It looks like 2024 is going to be a very busy year. So, O'Conne Connector, I think, is scheduled for that time. Shortly thereafter, Jimmy Daniel Road, and also up at Diles Mill and Diles Mill Spur, they're doing some pre-con, they're doing some early concepts on what's going to happen at that interchange. So that'll be an interchange at Diles Mill. There'll be a flyover at McNutt's Creek, I believe, flyover at Julian Drive, Virgil Langford. We have full interchanges at Jimmy Daniel and O'Conne Connect. Another big splash project, you're sitting in it, Sean's been working during the COVID time, getting this place a very nice space lift, looks really good. We hope you'll take some time to walk around. Bathrooms have been redone, the auditorium's been redone as well. Just a 441 bridge. So, the project's been on the shelf at GDOT, so we had to pull it off the shelf and do some updates to the engineering and double-check some of our environmental reports. That's under process now. January of 2021 should be the let date, so construction should be starting sometime in the spring to summer of 2021. No, no, based on what they presented to us, they should be done with any county infrastructure that should be in place for that location. Not sure, I hadn't seen that. So I do know with the FCC, they have to go through a lot of stuff before they even apply to us to erect a power. I'm not familiar if anything's zoned over there for a tower at this time. If it's not zoned, they would definitely have to come before us for a rezone.
I have been in contact with AT&amp;T and Verizon, not in that particular area, but they are focusing their concentration in the more populated areas. And there was some talk that Verizon and AT&amp;T, in fact, we have a site that's been approved, went through the Commissioners before I got on board a number of years ago. But they have pulled the build of that site, AT&amp;T initially did it, and then, so they backed out. And then Verizon gave me notice the other day that they had backed out on another one. So there is no future right now for the south end of the county, at least down Highway 15 area. And so they're focusing their efforts in the areas like you're talking about. So I'm not real sure about the area at the Jones property, but either.
That's correct. It's one of the things we had an engineering study down on, so we're going to have to spend some money to shore up the structure itself. Over the years, there's been different debates, even amongst the historical society, whether to add on to the building, open it up for events, and then, but then you have to, you know, what do you do about bathrooms? Do you put them inside? Do you heat in there? You take away some of it. So there's no real clear direction. Our main goal right now is to make sure the thing stays in pristine condition for future generations. But that's something that we're open to discussing on what the right direction is for.
Did you see that on Facebook? Is that what brought it to your attention? Because I know the Visitors Bureau just sent a picture of it in front of the schoolhouse out there, and it was on Facebook. I didn't know if that...
I will say that after the first of the year, we will, Chairman was mentioning some of the goals that we set back in, what was it, 2017? And we are going to be looking at that again. And so things, you know, comments like that would certainly be helpful, you know, for setting new goals. And if that, you know, is something that your committee has time to discuss, and we'd certainly look at that as well, and any other projects as well throughout the whole county.
Well, I'm looking forward to it. I think the five groups works really well to have that, the different opinions and different backgrounds coming in. So we definitely do miss Bubba being on there and think about him at every meeting. But I think the five-person design works very well.
I think it was four, and then I came on in 16, so, you know, I was going to say too, I think, and Bubba was a big part of this too. If you look at what we have done as a group, Don or Mark mentioned a little bit about how we got together, I think it was January, February back in 17. And, you know, we developed, you know, basically a plan, plan of action and projects that we were going to do. And I think, to be quite honest with you, I think we've been focused on doing what we said we would really do. And I think we've been knocking them out. And if you look at the old sales tax money that the county government was being criticized about having in the bank and not putting it in the projects, we pretty much knocked that out. But if you look at the projects we've done, we've done some really big-time projects. And, you know, we've done it without any drama. A lot of talking, you know, trying to make sure everybody's on the same sheet, but that's what, I think that's been the strength. There was five, we lost five, and we'll have five again. And I have no reason to believe that we won't continue doing good things for this county.
John, a couple of years ago, the county built a sewer line in Bodart and gave a little hard hill road to Watkinsville, and there's another sewer line through Watkinsville and western parts. Are there any projects within the county cities that y'all are involved in or y'all have any kind of any related that you'd like to talk about?
Well, there's nothing going on right now that I know of. We're always willing to sit down and work with our cities and help them any way we can. That's been kind of a history, you know? Even the city of Watkinsville, giving them controls of some sewer capacity to develop in the way they see fit, we've done that. So I think we've been a real friend to our cities and hope we continue that direction. Yeah, we're already meeting with the sheriff-elect now. We just approved a contract last night for some E-911 upgrades, $222,000 worth of hardware and software upgrades going into the E-911 center. So we've definitely sat down, talked about some of his goals, and all that will be kind incorporated into our strategic plan when we meet in, upcoming in January. No, there's two different personalities indeed between James and Scott, so, but we don't, we're looking forward to a really good relationship.
And I will say, budget-wise, you know, we do have that part of the overall county budget, but it is, the sheriff is a constitutional officer. I mean, you know, he's elected, so he has his own budget that he puts together, and then he presents it to us.
Yeah, I don't foresee any problems with working with James. I mean, he's been around a long time. We're all familiar with him. He's been a part of a lot of things in the community. More than likely, the bigger issue would be their command structure, because it's going to change. And they'll have to work through those issues. But as far as us working with the police department, there will be no issues.
Virtual activity? Oh, we're doing fine. We're communicating the same way we have in the past, you know? If the city council person wants to come sit down and talk with us, we'll meet with them. I'll meet with the mayor and talk with him, so. We, I'll meet with the mayor and talk with him, so. I, I don't know there's any problem. O'Conne County owns a sewer, the city turned it over many, many, many years ago. Yeah, so there's no, there's no issues I know of related to sewer. I think, yeah, I mean, that's, that was worked out. We had, have the IGA where we, we, we give, we've given them something that they've never had in, in the past, which is full control over their zoning within the city limits. So, they have the 100,000 gallons of sewer capacity now. If they want to do mixed use or higher density, you know, that's kind of up to the city of Watkinsville to, to figure out that vision for themselves. And they got the tools now to, to complete that, so. I, I'm not aware of any, I mean, any group may disagree on a subject here and there, but overall, there's no communication issues I'm aware of between the city and the county.
I would, I would go even further, there's, there's really no benefit for the county not to have a good relationship with any of our cities. And I, I think all of us would want the cities to succeed in endeavors that they get in, because we all benefit. If the city of Watkinsville is doing well, they bring in some type of business, O'Conne County's going to more likely benefit. I mean, it's, it's a relationship where we, we, we gain by what we're, the success of the others. And, you know, I would say this too, I think when we changed the, how we approached economic development, that was the first time that I know of that the city of Watkinsville, and I think Bogart participated in that too, I'm not sure if it does that, but they now have somebody to advocate for. In the past, the county wouldn't do it. It was county, period. But now, the, you got, the two bigger cities have, you know, somebody who can advocate for them. So, I think it's a much better situation, and I certainly have always, I, I had a good relationship with, with, with the cities. And I certainly want to see, certainly that you want to see the county succeed, succeed in, in the, the projects that they're doing, because we're just going to benefit from that.
So, to bring up something I thought of several times before, I'm still mad that I'm not able to reach the front door or whatever. Is that, is that what it means forever?
I'm not sure. What I will tell you is when we move to the administrative building, the front door will be open.
Really?
Yeah. Our front door is always open, so we'll...
That, that issue is the Superior Court judges and the sheriff, so that's, that's what their responsibility is, so you need to go talk with Scott and Jane.
I think I've heard you say that before, when I talked to them, they said go talk with the president. So, it's, it's an interesting issue.
I guarantee you, well, I guarantee you, if we were to go in there, what's tomorrow? Thursday? Thursday? And try to shut down, I guarantee you, we would have telephone calls from all Superior Court judges and sheriffs. Because we didn't put it there. And all, all that came from, because with the shooting in Fulton County, that's when all that, that tightened the story.
Well, that's, that's, of course, the reason. And I understand that so-called security issues would seem to be made with reasonable solve with appropriate funding. And so, but you, you say it's a security court. Well, I guess the compliance with the security court is solved, then the sheriff runs the door.
Well, we're solving it, we're moving out of the courthouse. And we'll build our own place, and then you can call to the sheriff and the Superior Court judges about the front door at the courthouse.
Where are you going?
Going down the road.
John, I saw the concept, trying to put the library in the administrative building on there. Was that two stories or three stories?
That's two stories. So, the bottom floor, there's the entrance, the concept now is the, the library have a separate entrance on the end, they'll have the bottom floor for 25,000 square feet. The second floor will be administration, will have a portion of the first floor, and our entrance will be in a separate, separate area, so the traffic doesn't get mixed up. Everybody's got plenty of room to move around. There's also, if you notice on the concepts, an, an area in one of the slides that's kind of highlighted for future expansion. I think that's the real key to this location, is it not only meets our needs now, but gives us opportunity to grow when that becomes necessary. So, library, when it gets, when it's time and it needs more than 25,000 square feet, we have a spot to start another building to, to give them that, so. Uh, that, that'll be at the city, we definitely have offered that, I'm, you know, I don't know why they wouldn't do that, but that's definitely not a problem with us. Once, once we get everything finished and built, we'll approach them again if they're interested, and we'll get that done. But if, if you'll look at our service area, and where people come from that go to that library, it's, it's going to be a lot better for the patrons of the library to, to get to, uh, from, at that location. It's just good in and out. No, not yet. Once we get everything moved around, we will have some surplus locations, the annex will be available. You know, there's a couple of other buildings right around the courthouse that could be surplused out at some point to help pay for some of the funding there. We hadn't really talked about the, the old library, about what to do with it.
I would guess, if you're able to, if you're able to get that property back, that would be it.
No, sir.
No?
No.
Yes.
No, no, speeding in the neighborhood is my biggest phone call. Yeah. Yep.
The American classic side that has helped, about established, the first companies came out, with like 80,000 cars per day, going 88 miles an hour up the hill, you want to tour that?
Yeah.
But, it flies like a fireball. Okay. Believe it or not, that's just basically the pattern, that that's just answers to a war. If you were, so, if my wife, if my wife and I still be, that's just the answer to this war?
Yes.
Well, property tax, of course, is one, one, one. So, the top of the screen for this car, flash, from the back, the property, the farmer's looking at this, but you're a bill, you're, you're able to say, we're lowering the millage rate instead. The tax, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, that's it. Now, I could understand that property value is going up, and, and, but, but, Watkinsville City, lower the millage rate. There's a question, or there's something?
Well, I'd say congratulations to them. I, you know, if, if they're meeting all the needs of their citizens, and they're, and their roads infrastructure is like they want it to be, and, and, and that's fine. You know, we struggle with that ourselves. I mean, we, we do, we do try to communicate to everybody that our millage rate has not changed in many, many years. And you look throughout the state, there's only six other counties in the entire state that have a lower millage rate. But we're also sensitive to, every year, the, the dollar amount that you write to the county and the city and the school board is bigger every year. And, and I, overall, I think we've done a really good job at utilizing our assets. We, we've been making changes over the last three or four years to, to how we operate, gaining efficiencies, our employee count has dropped. But we're looking at, you know, with, I think there's 250 employees of the county, county sheriff's office and the constitutionals. And, and just our health insurance going up 8%, it's huge dollar amount of money. And, and we've been very honest about our road infrastructure, that we're not, we're not paving enough roads to, to keep our infrastructure up, and we've been adding money, that's where we're, we're taking care of our employees without growing the employee count, and we're funneling money into our roadway system with, with those increases that come up. We'd love, we'd love to drop it, we'd love to be the lowest one on the list, and there may be a day where we can get there. So, we're, we're getting closer and closer every year to, to where we can meet our, meet our obligations and take care of all the things we need to take care of. We're very sensitive, we, I, every time somebody says something, I will mention that our, our millage rate is not changing, but we're not lost in that you're writing a bigger check every year. I got mine, I opened up this morning, actually, and I was like, woo! So, I'll be writing that check at the end of, probably on the 29th, if it's due on the 30th, so.
I want to say something too, if you go right down the road, there's, there's two parks. One on the other side, and I probably get four to 12 months, you know, at least 50 requests for more parks. And I think outside of the law enforcement side, you know, I think sheriff's departments is over 6 million?
Yeah, total of about 8 million.
About 8 million dollars, tax dollars, go to fund E-91, the jail, and the law enforcement function. And then you have the parks, Watkinsville doesn't have that. So, I, I think you'd be using an apple and a pineapple as comparison.
There is a park, if you want.
Well, they, they don't have the programming that the county does, and I, I, I don't want to take up hope, saying I really don't want to argue with you, but our parks operation is, is one thing, they have their park, but they don't have program like we do. And they don't have a sheriff's department that, their budget's 8 million dollars, and they don't have the roads that we do. And I can tell you, I think my colleagues would agree, we need probably 20 million a year just to deal with the roads. So, and, and I, I was on the county commission that worked to drop that millage rate. I'd go to it again. I thought we might, could have done it this year, but we got hit with the pandemic. And with that, you can't really predict what your revenues are going to be. So, I'd just say, you know, buy me a, a city that is really like us, then we can, we can talk about comparison. Like, they're my friends, but they're, they're, they don't run the same type of program.
No, not, we're, we're not anticipating any drop in the collection rate at this point. We'll know more, you know, by the end of the, of calendar year. But, we're feeling pretty, with the, with additional 500 we got with the local option and the special purpose tax, we're not, we're not really concerned about hitting our budget number at this point. Sales taxes, we're, our FY '20 sales tax was down about 4%, and then we bu, we budgeted for FY '21 to get to drop another 5% on top of that. So, we have not seen that big a drop, so we're feeling, we're feeling a lot, but we still got a long ways to go. I mean, we've got fall coming in and winter, and, you know, with the national election, national politics, who knew, who knows what's going to happen over the next six or eight months? We're still being very conservative, but we feel fairly strong that we're, we're doing well. All right, we do have our boards up outside, it's got a little, a lot more detail, they do have, we do have some concepts of the new administrative building, the new library. We have our CPR machine, back please stop and look at it. If, if we got a volunteer, we'll put you on the ground and run it on you, so you can see how it works. We also have our, our newest fire engine from Station 1 is out front, too. So, that's the kind of stuff we'll be funding for the, from the public safety side of this block 21. And we do appreciate you taking the time to coming out and visit with us. We'll do this again next quarter, and if there are no further questions, comments, or emotional outbursts, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.